Thank you. Deputy County Manager Grady, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Thank you so much. Commissioners, do you have any changes? Okay, thank you. So we did have a closed meeting statement. I offer the following statement regarding the closed litigation meeting that was held Tuesday, November 1st, 2023 at 8:30 AM. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting held on November 1st, 2023 were discussed at the meeting. I need a motion for approval of this statement and will become part of the minutes for this meeting.
Motion to approve?
Thank you. I'll second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Kestada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Aye.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes.
Thank you. And we will start with item number four, Count on Us Minute. DCM Enrico Grady to introduce.
With great pleasure. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So the staff of Burnaleo County's unclaimed and indigent cremation program works tirelessly year-round to locate loved ones of the county's deceased and indigent residents. Those who are unclaimed are provided a dignified burial service, one for veterans and another for civilians. This evening, our Count on Us Minute spotlights our indigent burial program and the compassionate work we do to ensure that no Burnaleo County resident is forgotten in the final chapter of their life.
On September 28th, the cremains of 52 New Mexico veterans were given a military funeral, followed by interment with full military honors at the Santa Fe National Cemetery. The services were provided by the Forgotten Heroes Program, established in 2010 as a collaborative effort by Burnaleo County and the New Mexico Departments of Veteran Services to provide New Mexico's indigent and unclaimed veterans a proper military burial. It is the only state-managed, regularly-scheduled funeral in the nation for unclaimed deceased veterans.
We, the county, decided for non-veterans and those that weren't qualified to be buried in the national cemetery, we decided to also give them a dignified, respectful memorial service and have a county memorial service for those decedents that have passed away in Burnaleo County.
The latest ceremony was on November 2nd, when 89 citizens were laid to rest at Fairview Memorial Park.
Since 2012, over 1,300 Burnaleo County residents, including those honored here today, have had the dignity and respect of a burial that may not have been provided to them if it weren't for this program.
We may not have known them or even met them, but we know that we are here to make sure that each one of them will always be remembered.
Diane Chavez is the Operations Manager for the county's General Services Division, which oversees the program.
I think every individual is worth recognizing and worth claiming. And if they don't have someone to claim, that's why we do. We're their family. We're the ones that claim them.
The staff of three women in the county's unclaimed indigent cremation program worked tirelessly year-round to identify the deceased, locate, and inform their loved ones about their passing.
We do computer searches. It's amazing what's on the internet these days. We do a lot. We use a lot of different programs, and then it's cold calling. It's calling maybe for each deceased or 100 people.
They do a great job in reuniting those families. They work tirelessly day after day.
I absolutely love my job.
Christine DeJulio is a licensed social worker and the program's coordinator.
I did investigations, and I dealt a lot with grief and loss with families, loss of losing children, family members.
It's that background, combined with her innate compassion and love of her job, that makes the difference in the lives of so many people.
It's amazing. That's what makes a job so wonderful. I mean, we're dealing with the decedents, but we're also dealing with their families, and the families are so grateful. A lot of times, we give families the first knowledge that they have that someone passed.
Alfred Erica Sanchez, Alexander Aragon.
The annual ceremonies are a time to say farewell to the county's often-forgotten residents and veterans, but they're also a time to celebrate the lives they lived.
One person we buried today, she was very young, and her father signed consent for the county, and she was an artist. And she created her own website, and it's just amazing what people have done with their lives.
Thank you so much for that. I want to say a quick word just to say, you know, I really, when I learned about this and our Deputy County Manager Lisa Citya is in the audience, and she does so much work to make this happen, her and a team of people, as you saw, to make this happen, to honor and respect life with dignity. I think I get a little choked up because I ever am just reminded in this process that how much my district is the place that just does not turn our back on our most vulnerable populations, on indigent folks, right? And those in most need, from our university hospital to the Gateway Center, to the CARES campus, to even this Fairview Cemetery that accepts our indigent burial for our indigenous communities, our most vulnerable populations. I just, yeah, I love the people in my district. I think we're stronger for it. So I just wanted to mention that and just thank all the folks who put so much work into providing a dignified, respectful. I mean, there's a song somebody wrote. It's a full service, a full ceremony, celebrating the lives of these folks. And I'm just thankful that the county does that in such a beautiful way. So thanks to all that make that happen. I'm going to move us forward. Number five, we're going to move on to proclamations. You know, we're a little late, so we want to move some things forward. We do have a Nurse Practitioners Week. Somebody reached out to me, and both Commissioner Cherebaka and myself both have nursing families. Great, thank you. Please come up to the podium, and I'll give you a few moments to speak. First, I'm going to read out this proclamation that is sponsored, but also signed by all of the commissioners, but sponsored by myself and Cherebaka. Whereas, nurse practitioners play a critical role in the healthcare system in Burnaleo County and across New Mexico, providing high-quality, patient-centered care in a variety of settings. And whereas, nurse practitioners are highly-trained, licensed professionals who have completed rigorous education and clinical training, including a master's doctoral degree in nursing and national certification in the area of specialization. And whereas, New Mexico has been a leader in recognizing the importance of nurse practitioners and granted them full-scope authority to practice to the full extent of their education and training without the need for physician oversight or collaborative practice agreements, which has improved access to care and increased healthcare efficiency. And whereas, nurse practitioners are providing care to an increasingly diverse patient population, with nearly 20% of all nurse practitioners providing care in rural and underserved areas, and over 20% providing care to Medicaid and Medicare beneficiaries throughout the nation, probably more here in New Mexico. Whereas, nurse practitioners are vital to addressing the growing demand of primary care services with an estimated 1 in 5 Americans receiving care from a nurse practitioner annually. Now therefore be it resolved that the Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners here does by proclaim November 12 through 18, 2023, National Nurse Practitioner Week, and calls on all citizens to recognize the critical role of nurse practitioners in the healthcare system of Burnaleo County and across New Mexico, done this 14th day of November in Burnaleo County, State of New Mexico. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to really appreciate this opportunity to be recognized, nurse practitioners. We're everywhere, right? We're in your grocery stores. Well, I live in your district, right? We're your neighbors. Our kids go to school with you. We take care of your newborns. We take care of your children. We take care of you, aunts, uncles, grandmas, grandpas. We're there at the beginning of the life. We're there at the end of the life. It is always a pleasure to take our time and to care for everybody that we touch. And I just really love this opportunity to be able to talk about nurse practitioners. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'm honored to be able to present this and recognize our nurse practitioners. Thank you so much. Can you come up? Let's take a picture if you don't mind, if you don't mind. Trying to move us forward, and next is also sponsored by me, the next proclamation. I'm very excited and again honored to be able to recognize and acknowledge the Health Equity Council. There's so much I hope you get to hear a little bit more about what our Health Equity Council does, also in my district, but serves the whole county and really is in a place where we don't have a public health entity here in the county. They really serve as a de facto public health entity for our, at least for public access and information awareness. So I'd like to ask, Enrico, can you come up to the podium with any of the folks presenting? Yes. And I'll read the acknowledgement, and then you, of course, can have a few minutes.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. So acknowledging the Health Equity Council, acknowledging that in 2019, the New Mexico Legislature repealed the Maternal and Child Health Plan Act and enacted the County and Tribal Health Councils Act in 1978 as amended, and acknowledging that the purpose of County and Tribal Health Councils is to improve the health of New Mexicans by encouraging the development of comprehensive, community-based planning councils to identify and address local health needs and priorities. And acknowledging that the act requires the Board of County Commissioners or leadership of a tribe to recognize only a single health council for its jurisdiction. And acknowledging that the board shall recognize only a county or tribal health council whose members represent a diverse spectrum of community interests, including individuals and public, private, and nonprofit entities. And acknowledging that the health council shall be responsible for conducting all activities as required by the act and its amendments. And acknowledging that the New Mexico Department of Health is entrusted to ensure long-term viability of health councils, provide training and other support, administer supportive funding, and adopt and promulgate rules as necessary to carry out the purposes of the act to health councils. And acknowledging the Health Equity Council has operated since 1992 in Burnaleo County under the Maternal and Child Health Plan Act and plans to continue under the County and Tribal Health Councils Act. And acknowledging that Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners officially recognized the Health Equity Council under the previous name, Burnaleo County Community Health Council, as a viable health council benefiting the residents of Burnaleo County on June 22, 2004. Now therefore be it resolved that Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners re-recognizes the Health Equity Council as the official health council for the county for the purposes outlined in the County and Tribal Health Act, done this 14th day of November 2023 in Burnaleo County, State of New Mexico, signed by all five of us commissioners. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Love to hear.
Okay. Thank you all for having the Health Equity Council here. I've known some of you for a while and meeting some of you newly. We've been a partner with the county, the city, the state, and other institutions for over 30 years. We plan to continue that. We were at one time part of Burnaleo County Government, and during that time, we created the Opioid Accountability Initiative, which leads to a large part of our work doing opioid prevention and overdose reversal. We were at one time the main provider of Narcan for Burnaleo County. We've trained MDC Burnaleo County as well as APD. We've also trained Burnaleo County Parks and Recs and Open Space folks on syringe pickup, safe syringe pickup. We provide that for community in general, but specifically with our partners. We continue to provide Narcan to MDC and other partners. We now have a youth prevention component that does prevention around alcohol and opioids. We work on health policy development with the City of Albuquerque. We network with housing advocates, advocates for unhoused folks, people doing work around treatment and prevention. We work with the Healthy Here Project that supports local growers from the South Valley and across the county. We are piloting air quality testing in southeast Albuquerque. We continue to work with county and city on projects around pedestrian safety, economic redevelopment, substance use prevention, and more. We can plan to continue to do this long-term. We're a small office, but we do what we can with our institutional partners. We leverage that as much as possible. We're currently mapping our mental health system and advocates to try to get a better idea of what's going on so that we can help pull that together and make that something that serves more folks in our community. We develop a county health profile. And during COVID, we took a lot of work, unpaid work, that wasn't work that wasn't funded specifically around providing advice for COVID guidelines, encouraging people to mask up, encouraging people to get vaccines. There's now funding for that, so we're continuing that work. We even do voter registration. The county clerk has trained us, and so we feel that that type of participation is important for a healthy community. We're currently testing out door-to-door outreach, since we know not that many people know about the Health Equity Council, or that even there is a health council for their county. We're doing monthly outreach to get information, Narcan, sometimes basic supplies to community members across the county. And beyond our grant-funded programs, we do our best to be a safe place for people to have hard conversations about public health issues, to get support around things like getting Narcan. There's people who feel that there's a lot of stigma around carrying Narcan or the fact that they may need Narcan or have a family member. And we do as much as we can to provide education on a wide range of health issues, from eating your vegetables to participating in civic so that we can get safer streets, better public transportation, more quality and safe housing for everybody. And these wide variety of issues. And so we have taken on the role consciously to act as our local health department, even though we know we have the Department of Health that does a lot of work in public health. We do not have that local entity, and as the commissioner mentioned, you know, we're doing our best to step into that role, funded or unfunded, to try to make sure that we have a place in the county that can provide information and be a resource to elected officials and community members in order to promote a healthier and more vibrant Burnaleo County. Thank you very much for recognizing us. It's a great honor. It was 2004 the last time, and I think it was 2012 the last time I was in front of a commission. So it's great to be here with you all today. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Excited. And number six, certificates and awards. We do have Public Works Division Deputy County Manager Archie Letta to present.
Actually, it's me.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Barboah, Commissioners, my name is Antonio Haddamia. I'm the Director of Operations Maintenance. I have the honor and pleasure of recognizing one of my employees, and you'll know in just a second why we're recognizing him. And, you know, he has been a staple of our traffic section for a number of years. So I just wanted to read this acknowledgement. This is the Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge Anthony A. Almora, acknowledging that he has 37 years of service in Burnaleo County, 35 of which he has been in operations and maintenance. A. Al began his career in the county, spending his first two years as a custodian in Parks and Rec and in Open Space Department before joining Traffic Department as a sign maker. A. Al worked his way up to his current role as a traffic engineering technician. And acknowledging that A. Almora having a vital role in developing and implementing traffic, calming measures, and performing traffic studies to help with the safety and well-being of the residents and visitors of Burnaleo County. And acknowledging that A. Almora's professionalism and calm manner while working daily with constituents and informing them of the department's processes. And acknowledging A. Almora's vast institutional knowledge, including his robust filing system. And just a side note, it's a site to be seen, his filing system. And for, let me see where I lost my place here. Not, including his, including his filing system, which dates back many years and of the history of Burnaleo County roads. And acknowledging A. Almora's knowledge of administrative processes, including purchasing, and his great relationship with vendors and contractors. And acknowledging A. Al's understanding of the safety and well-being of the motoring public, which made a significant impact to many lives in Burnaleo County. And acknowledging A. Al's being married for 40 years to his wife, Dora, being the father of two children and grandfather of four children, grandchildren. Now therefore, it be resolved that Burnaleo County Board of County Commissioners thus acknowledges A. Almora's tenure, dedication, and attention to detail, his dedication to safety, and his loyal service. We are truly grateful for you. Done this 14th day of November 2023 in Burnaleo County, State of New Mexico, signed by all county commissioners. You with your family with you?
Yeah.
One's a family. Come on down.
Come on.
Dora.
Come on, Dora. Oh, yay, the grandkids too.
Madam Vice-
That's where I'm taking, that's where I'm retiring now.
So, Madam Chair, while you guys are getting ready for the picture, where most of you guys will recognize his work, even though his name may not be on it, is the speed studies that we do. When we're trying to figure out if trapping common menders and all that is needed, that's Mr. Mora over here.
Thank you so much, Familia. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Familia. Hi, Dora. Thank you so much.
All right, that's a good.
Yes, you look sharp.
That's a great phone call.
Okay, y'all ready? One more.
And an honor, I just want to say, Mr. Mora, thank you so much for your years of service. I would love, I'm a story person. I would love to hear the stories you have to tell about our roads and all your years of service. So thankful. Thanks for bringing that forward. Now we will move on to public comment. But before we, well, before we move into public comment, we'll hear Communications Item 7A, which is actually University of New Mexico Hospital Report by CEO Kate Becker.
Good evening. Thank you all. What a great story that was. My report's in your packet. I do have a couple of points I want to call out for you, and then I also want to address, I know the residents are here this evening. And so I do want to mention just a little bit about where we are with that.
And before you start, I'm sorry to say, but we are not supposed to allow signs during the commencement. Thank you. Value your advocacy. Thank you, CEO Kate Becker.
So we ended FY '23, which of course ended June 30th, with a bottom line of just under negative $12 million. You might remember when I was last here, we had the end-of-May report. At that time, we were at a negative $27 million. So we did have some end-of-the-year pickups, and we also managed to achieve, through financial improvement work, break even for the month of June. So by the time we got to the end of FY '23, we're at negative $12 million. We did budget break even for FY '24, which is the year we are in now. We just completed that first quarter, and I know you've seen in your packet that as of the end of September, we're at negative $27 million year-to-date. So we are continuing those financial improvement efforts. We're doing that in a couple of ways. What we started to see in July was some deterioration in our operating revenue, which we had not previously seen. So we have some work going on with our revenue cycle and working on improvements from that perspective. Then on the other side, expense management, we did continue to see very high expenses, much more for medical supplies now and still continuing for compensation and benefits, which is our single largest expense. So between those combined efforts, we do expect to reach our break even still by the end of the year, but it is very tight. And that's why I want to talk about compensation increases. We budgeted a 0% compensation increase for every person, in the 7,000 people who work for UNM Hospital for FY '24. No one got a raise. The people in leadership took pay cuts. The only group of people we budgeted a salary increase for was a 2% salary increase for the residents who serve our patients, because we felt that was that important. But we can't do more than that. We have to be fiscally responsible, and we don't have any more room in the budget. I understand and sympathize with the fact that it would be good if they could be paid more money. We don't have the budget to do that, and it wouldn't be fair to all of those other people to do pay cuts there so that we could give more money to this group. So it's a difficult balancing act, and I appreciate that. But where we are right now, we don't have the money to do it. And we'll say there are a couple of things going on. The first one is the financial improvement efforts we talked about. And so that's really important. I'm going to talk about that in a little bit more detail. The second one is working with the state and specifically with the Human Services Department on how we can improve Medicaid reimbursement for the hospital, because that is the place where, if there is an opportunity for revenue improvement and reimbursement improvement, we would have more flexibility in our budget. So a little bit about efficiency. If any of you have been to our emergency room, you know that we're delivering a lot of care in the waiting room of the emergency room. That's because on any given day, we have 60 to 80 patients holding in the back of the emergency room who are waiting to go upstairs. They are admitted patients who don't yet have beds upstairs. As of this morning, there were 79 patients holding in the emergency room. We're at 130% of our capacity, and now this time of year, Peds starts to fill up, which is where we occasionally have flexibility. Peds is now coming into about 100% of its capacity. So we don't have that room to kind of move people around a little bit. So we took the emergency room as our example of, we don't see the patient experience we want to see. We don't see the provider experience we want to see. It's not, people aren't happy to be there. So we took that as our example. We implemented some process improvement work, looking at how can we do this better? And this sounds simple. One of the things we had happening was people are in the waiting room. The providers are in the back. They're getting paged to come out, see the patients go back, come out, see the patients go back. The number of trips this is taking and the- go back, come out, see the patients go back, the number of trips this is taking and the time it's adding isn't satisfying for anybody, right? Well, why is that? These are smart people, right? They're not trying to work harder, right? It's because we didn't kind of come out of the COVID hangover yet, we haven't made the mental shift of that emergency room is going to be full of admitted patients until we are able to move out of that building, it's not going to change, it's not going back. And so the mental model was, post-COVID, it's going back, and then we'll be able to pull the patients back to the back, and that's where the providers should be. So the change we made is to say, okay, let's put a team of providers at the front, because that's where we're actually now going to be seeing a lot of the patients. So we're going to be bringing that sort of process model and that change in the mental model to the whole house, like top to bottom, because it's not going back to the way it was before COVID. And for all of healthcare, that's a huge financial, operational, logistical realization, the supply chain is permanently different, the cost of things is permanently different, the way we do our work is going to have to be different too. So all of that is sort of underway. Okay, so besides all of that, just a couple of bright spots, we're more than seventy percent complete on the new critical care tower, so we're getting closer to getting there, and we're also approaching completion on the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, which I know folks are super interested in, we're very appreciative of that partnership with the county, and we're more than a hundred days now that we've been out at MDC, so Dr. Kumar is actually out there, I was out at the opening yesterday, he's the medical healthcare monitor, he's out there yesterday, today, and tomorrow, just giving us feedback, we're learning from him, but it's been a really good experience, and I would say there's a couple of things that we've been able to impact quickly, one of the biggest ones being putting our rapid response team out there, which has made such a difference in the time that we can get to in case when something happens, and then the other thing is really building that stronger relationship with the corrections officers, and we are so grateful for the warden and for the corrections officers and their engagement, we actually have provided basic life safety training to all of the corrections officers, so they feel more confident when they are in a situation, and then we do ongoing training for advanced cardiac life support training, because this is really important, if you're going to be the first person at a scene, you don't want to be in a panic over what do I do, you want to feel like you're confident in your training and you know what to do, and so that partnership is really already starting to bear some fruit. Also, somebody from the warden's team comes to our leadership puddle every morning at eight, so that's very helpful. So, that's what I have for you, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, CEO Becker. Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Becker, I'm gonna make a statement, and I'm gonna ask a few questions. So, as you know, I just came out of a strike myself, I'm sagged after, and you know, we heard a lot of those talking points ourselves, and you know, we also know, we're aware that we're not the only ones that are involved in a movie, in making a movie, so you know, we understand that we're just a piece of that, but you know, we really felt that, you know, we needed to stand our ground, and at the end of the day, they realized that we were a pretty key part of filmmaking, and you know, we reached that. And so with that being said, I understand your dilemma, and I think, I think you have a big job, and I want you to know that, I know for a fact you don't have an easy job at all. When I sat on the School Board of Education, was probably the largest budget, you know, within Burnley County, easily, and every year we struggled, because we got one size of a pie, and I think you understand when I mean that, here's your pie, make it happen. And every year as a school board member, we tried, but we also knew that every year we started the school year about three hundred, sometimes four hundred teachers short, because we weren't able to creatively cut a bigger piece of pie, and I understand the dilemma, where do I make a smaller piece, how do I get a larger piece, how do I get that to happen? So I just wanted to say that before I ask these questions, that I understand, but I also know that, you know, public education doesn't happen without teachers, so it's tough, you have a tough job. So my first question is, you know, I know that the New Mexico Legislature, they allotted a five percent raise for UNM employees in the budget, and you know, I heard you that nobody's getting a raise, how do we address that issue with only the two percent for, for, you know, our interns, and how do we respond to the state by saying, you allocated five percent, but we're only going to do percent for just this other section, and no one else is going to get it? So how do we respond to the state for that?
So the state funds through ING, and ING doesn't go to the hospital, because we aren't the university, we are the hospital, so our budget is generated from our clinical revenues, and so that's why it's really important for us to work with HSD, because the majority of our patients are covered by their Medicaid or Medicare, and so that is our primary funding source, and so working with, with HSD to improve Medicaid reimbursement is really the place where we can sort of make those goals come together.
Can I ask a follow-up just to that same?
Sure, if you'd like.
Thank you, just, I mean, I understood that part, that it's really because they're residents, but they're still students at the university, so they're paid as university employees, not necessarily University of New Mexico, of the hospitals' employees, I just, is that, if that five percent was included for the university and its staff, does that mean that the residents weren't thought of, and maybe, I mean, this might be a question for President Stokes, but I guess, since you're here.
Thanks, so that is a confusing space, right, because the hospital, the way Medicare funds graduate medical education, which is the primary source of funding in the United States for residents and graduate medical education, is through hospitals, so that funding goes to the hospital through the hospital's cost report, and so that money then gets allocated from the hospital to pay the residents. Now, about twenty percent of the time, like here, the actual employer, like on the paycheck of the resident, is the university, about eighty percent of the time, the employer is the hospital because of that mechanism, but either way, the funding comes from the hospital because it's being provided through the Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement. I hope that helps, it's a really complex area.
I mean, it's more understandable, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, and you know, we definitely understand that, and so, I just, I just want to kind of, you know, this is our teaching hospital, this is where our hope that we get these, you know, these interns become doctors and stay in our state, I think it's vital that that happens, I think we both believe that, I don't think you don't believe that, I know you do, you know, I'll just, you know, we have to look at, you know, how important are they really for the future of, you know, of healthcare in, in the state of New Mexico? Quick little story, my mom lost her cardiologist, because she was just, she just couldn't even keep up with her patients, she packed up, she left, it's probably not, it's probably a story you hear a lot, my mother's ninety years old, and so our next appointment is seven months from now. Now, even at my age, at sixty-seven months, that's kind of, that's kind of iffy, right? But at ninety-seven months is, is really dangerous, and it's an eternity, I think, really, at that point, and it's not, again, I want to be a part of your solution, I'm not here trying to call you out on stuff, I want to know how we are going to look at that, what's your long-term goal, and is it something that we can do to advocate the state, to, to let them know that, you know, that we have a crisis, and you're aware of the crisis, we're aware of the crisis, but we really, and I always seem to like bringing up the state lately, but it seems like no one really ever talks about the state, because we don't want to get in trouble, right, because our funding sources come down from the state, don't get yourself in trouble, but at the end of the day, I think this is a huge, so sometimes there's a crisis where we actually have to say something, so I just want to ask this question real quick, I'm sorry for taking so much time. What, what is, what's the plan for that, at UNM, and what's the plan for the future, in a short-term kind of plan in the future for our interns?
So, thank you for the question, and the first thing I would say is that the governor actually called a healthcare summit in August, specifically to deal with the variety of needs in the healthcare workforce, we certainly need doctors, a hundred percent, we need nurses, we need radiology techs, we need respiratory therapists, we need every kind of healthcare provider, and those solutions are both short-term and long-term, and the long-term is long, because the pipeline is really long, right? You really have to start getting folks believing they can do this in somewhere in middle school, and building it up from there, so it is a very long process. Some of the things that came out of that discussion are things we're still talking to HSD about today, a couple of concrete examples, one of them is increase in Medicaid reimbursement, so we're able to support more of these folks, another one of them is, how do we use some of those funds for things like preceptors for nursing students, because right now, UMH, we train so many nurses, but our nurses don't get paid separately for precepting, they are just paid for their nursing duties and their time that they're doing that, and they are, they want to train that next generation of nurses, and we're doing it twenty-four hours a day, we have nursing students at night, we have nursing students on weekends, it's a lot of nursing students, and so how can we help fund those folks in a way that will help support that work? So I would say that the, the shortest-term answer is how do we improve the reimbursement side of the pipeline, so that we can allocate those funds? The longer-term answer is how do we encourage people from all communities to think that they can do this work on whatever part of the healthcare continuum they want to do it? How do we provide opportunities for them to do that, particularly through high school? How do we expand things like the BAMD program, so that they have a cohort to go with all the way from their bachelor's degree through their medical degree? And then how do we support and provide additional opportunities? It's also important to recruit physicians from other states, we cannot, at a hundred medical students a year, grow enough workforce to create the entire workforce for the state of New Mexico, we cannot, with seven hundred residents, create the entire workforce, we can create a big part of it, but we also have to recruit folks from other places, and so those are even bigger picture things, why do people move to a place? They move to a place because they have family there, because they see opportunity there, because they feel safe there, because their kids can get a good education there, it's a holistic thing, and so I think it's not just the money, the money is certainly important, it's also how do we create that opportunity and that community support for folks to want to be part of this community, and who feel called to that work, to find a path to being trained to do it.
I agree with that statement, but I also have to follow up that, you know, there's, you know, that we also have to follow through on our end, to show them that that's what we believe in them, you know, to, we need to retain what we have, I, I get the recruiting piece, but I think what's more important right now is the retention of that, and I think we both agree, again, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to point fingers, I want to help try to be part of the solution, I want to stand strong with, with these unions, I'm a union guy, but I'm, but I'm also a commissioner, and I have to represent both sides of this, of this, you know, argument, which basically puts me in a difficult position. So maybe outside this meeting, we could talk about what I can do to advocate, and I'm hoping that your short-term plan is a really short-term plan, because, you know, we have students that are in debt, I have children that are in, you know, educational debt, and I want them to feel that we as a community, respect them, appreciate them, heck, we love them, because without them, we have no one to provide services for us. I know you're an administrator, and I'm a commissioner, but at the end of the day, they have to be our priority, and like I said, I'm an actor, and you need everybody else to make a movie too, but eventually, they had to pay us, so I'm just asking, can we look at a piece of a pie to slice off a little bit more, so that we are showing that respect? So either we do that, or you teach me how to advocate at a higher level, to help you help them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, yeah, if I could just do one related question, I did, I was aware, I believe that, that the state did increase Medicaid reimbursements, just because you'd mentioned that sort of as the one opportunity, and I think the state did, which should have been enacted July of this year, those Medicaid reimbursements should be, so that's hopeful that, and I, I know it's not to a hundred percent, but that's hopeful that in future budgets, we could include this for the needs, but definitely for residents, as we're talking about this evening.
Yes, Madam Chair, and I think that for UNM Hospital, it's very important for the state to support the rural hospitals of our state, and so you can think of that rate increase as on a sliding scale from the most being devoted to the rural hospitals, which is a hundred percent appropriate, they need the help, they need the resources, and then the lowest amount being allocated to the urban teaching hospital, because we do have an opportunity to work further with the state, on how we can supplement that payment through Medicaid, in a way that we can help contribute to completing that, so thank you for your support with it.
Thank you for that, I'll let my other, yes, Commissioner Benson.
Oh, thank you. I also want to congratulate you for losing twelve million dollars, down from twenty-four million dollars, and aiming for a break even, I just want to point out, I applaud the residents for fighting for greater wages, you should, you should be fighting, and I recognize how tough of a balancing act that is, especially being a Medicaid-reliant hospital, and I don't know if everybody understands how difficult it is to live on Medicaid reimbursement. I had a business that billed Medicaid as a medfragrwafer for medically fragile children, and eventually we sold to a larger out-of-state, multi-state company who could rely on economies of scale, which is basically how UNM does it. Presbyterian is sinking, Presbyterian hospitals sinking, they are, they don't take as much Medicaid as a percentage as UNM does, UMH does, but it's a greater average, greater percentage than the average hospital across the country, because New Mexico has such high poverty levels. So if you want to improve the residents' pay, the rural hospitals' pay, bring employers in, where there is greater insurance being offered. Also, tort reform, go to Santa Fe, tell them to quit suing the doctors out of the state, seriously. Commissioner Casada, you want to fight for the residents, tell the, tell your representatives to quit suing our doctors out of the state. I have sat at so many recruitment dinners with my wife, who is a PA at Presbyterian, where we were, we were doing our best song and dance to bring physicians to the state, and PAs, and nurse practitioners, and we would come down to the bottom, top three, and the spouse would be sitting there, and then they would read, huh, I see homeless people everywhere, I see murders on the front page of every newspaper, I see, you've got the worst education in the nation, you're fifty-first, I thought there's only fifty states, how can you be fifty-first? And so we'd be answering these, these questions, then the spouse would say, hey, I'd like a job too, because I'm not in the medical industry, are there jobs? Yeah, sure, if you're an engineer, you want to get a job at Sandia, so then they would choose other states, and then, then they host these functions up to say, huh, how can we keep our doctors here? How can we recruit more? Look at what matters to everybody, jobs, education, safety, that's it. So fight for tort reform, lower the lawsuit limits, my gosh, man, it's crazy, I beg you guys to stay in New Mexico, please, but then tell them to change the laws in Santa Fe, so that it's not just benefiting the trial attorneys, they're the ones making the bank, and then the physicians leave, and I hate it, so, anyway, this is a bigger issue than just Medicaid reimbursement and two percent raise, they need a bigger raise, but so do the rest of your employees, and, and the state needs more than just one Medicaid hospital. I've got friends and family from Tuukun Care who have to come to UMH just to be seen, because they can't afford to live on it, on Medicaid reimbursement in Tuukun Care, so, yeah, it's a bigger issue, you guys are doing a great job, keep fighting for yourselves, but this is a bigger issue, and it's not the CEO's fault, go to Santa Fe, that's where the, that's where the real solutions are, thank you.
Commissioner Levas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, CEO Becker, for, for being here tonight. I, I hate to pile on this train, and, and one thing that I want to say is, yes, there are all of these state-level problems that, that need to be addressed, whether it's, you know, taxation of, of medical services, or, you know, crime issues, educational issues, but frankly, I think that is, that's a bit of passing the buck in the way here, because, you know, we have a, a problem here and now at our local hospital, and it's unfortunate that, you know, we are funding the largest hospital in the state on basically local dollars, it's not really a good way to do it, but to just throw up our hands and say, this is, this is bigger than us, we have to look elsewhere, you know, the state needs to do it, that's- That's beyond a hail mary, because I think we all know that, you know, we might be lucky to get one of those things, one small policy change that might help move the needle. But I don't think we expect that, that all of these stars are going to align and we're going to do all of this stuff. I hope it happens, but I'm realistic, we have a 30-day session coming up. And we have a group of residents in front of us. And we have, you know, groups of doctors or, or residents and, and students looking at New Mexico every day, every week, and making their decisions now. And so I, I really feel we've, we've got to, sure, we've got to do the state stuff. You know, your, your state legislative request, whether, you know, policy, capital, all those things matter. But, you know, what are, what are you looking at to, to really grow revenue? I mean, I'm a business person and, and so, you know, money matters. And it matters to residents, it matters to employees. It's, all those other things that Commissioner Benson said do matter, yes. But, I mean, the number one thing with pretty much any employee, especially folks just starting out in the workforce, is how much am I going to make today? That is the most basic need. Especially when you have medical debt, you need to get an apartment, all these things. And so, you, you know, all this other stuff, yes, it matters, but what, you know, what are you doing to grow the revenue? And I realize it's, you're, you're fixed. I mean, as Commissioner Quesada said, you, you have a certain pie, but, you know, looking at your numbers here, 40% Medicaid, 20% Medicare, 24% insurance. My understanding is that insurance is the most profitable slice of that pie, the, the highest rates usually. Is there any way to, to grow that, to make the hospital system more attractive to insurance payers that, that are out there?
Thank you for that question. So a couple of things about that. The first one is, commercial insurance here, like everywhere, is the only payer that covers more than the cost of care. However, we have a mission to serve the underserved of this community. So our job is to have our doors open to everyone, not just the people who can pay, right? And so the thing we can do is figure out how to efficiently manage our volume. The number one thing we can do that would impact revenue is reducing our length of stay. Our length of stay is somewhere between a day and a half and two and a half days greater than the national average. We were able to take a half day out last year, we had a goal of a whole day. And so we continue to have that goal of getting one more day out this year. The reason length of stay is important is if you think of it like turning tables in a restaurant. You only have one table, you only have one bed. But if you have more than one party at the table, you're getting the revenue to support that. And so those fixed costs that go with having the bed, which is part of the reason why some of the payers don't cover the whole cost. Those fixed costs are better covered if you have higher turnover, that's the, the easiest way to say it. The things that go into reducing length of stay, it is the single hardest thing to move in a hospital anywhere. It doesn't matter who you are, it's hard. Because it takes coordination from so many different pieces and many of them are actually outside the hospital. So if you think of it in three tranches, there's before you get to the hospital, do you have access to your clinics? We are really strained, as we heard about in cardiology, on getting people into our clinics. So how can we work with our faculty and try to figure out to how to be more efficient in helping our patients make appointments, keep appointments, and have the right experience during those appointments? On the backend, it's how do you, again, have access to your clinics, also home health? Because how do you make sure that folks are not bouncing back into the hospital, right? That, that when they're ready to go, they can leave. In the middle, it's all of the pieces around, are your lab turnarounds fast? Are your imaging turnarounds quick? How do you make sure that there's care coordination? Because in our hospital, people are sicker than other people, right? Their, the average case mix index is a measure of how sick people are, 1.0 is average. We always run above 2. We are always running with very sick patients. So those folks need a lot of care coordination. They're not just seeing one doctor, they're seeing a lot of doctors. So how do you make sure that you're coordinating that care and making sure that it's sort of seamless? And then the biggest thing, especially here, is how do you make sure folks are ready for discharge? And some of those discharge challenges have to do with things like, do they have running water? Do they have electricity? Do they have a home to go to? How do we set that up so that they can be successful? So we lease beds from some of our long-term care facility partners. We sponsor care for beds at Albuquerque Opportunity Center. We look for places that we can safely have people transition to that next level of care. They don't necessarily need our level of care anymore, but they're not ready to go back to their home or wherever they may have come from. So that, that is the centerpiece of the work that has to happen to be able to affect and impact on revenue. And that is the thing we've been working on since July, actually, of 2022. So we've seen, again, about a half day so far. We need about another whole day. I hope that's helpful, it was a lot more detail than you probably wanted, but that's kind of what we do.
No, no, that's, that's really helpful and, you know, it's clear that you're, that you're thinking about that, about how you, you know, make that pie more efficient, if you will, and, and allow more of that, those revenues to go back to providers. Because I think what you're, what you're seeing is probably a little bit of a chicken or the egg thing, right? If, if you don't have the providers, then you can't turn around and provide the services, the quick imaging, or, you know, getting people into appointments. And then, you know, the line becomes longer and, you know, you, you kind of can't get ahead of it. And I, I noticed that unfortunately from the report where, where you are reporting, and, and these, I think, are probably the type of visits that we, that we want people to be using, rather than the emergency room or urgent care. But, you know, we're seeing an, an increase in those emergency room visits and an increase in the time to get a behavioral health appointment and an increase or decrease in the overall number of primary care visits. Do you have any kind of theory, idea on why you're seeing those types of trends? Why, why we're getting less people that are utilizing the, the primary service and it's taking longer to, to deliver?
It's, in both of those cases, it's providers, provider availability.
So, yeah, I think it just goes back to that. We don't have the providers, but we need the providers, but we can't pay the providers because we don't have the providers to make the revenue to pay the providers. It's, it's, it's really frustrating. And I, I understand the, the conundrum that you're in to, to do that. And then another question I had was fast-track patients. You, you mentioned those in here and I'm just kind of wondering what that is, what does that refer to?
The idea for that is how we get patients through the emergency room quickly. The struggle we've had is the physical layout and the way to schedule that. And so that's really speaking to how do we sort of recreate that fast-track experience with knowing everything's going to be delivered in the waiting room? We're not going to have people able to come back and be seen and turned from there. We're going to have to figure out how to do it in triage in the waiting room.
Great. I think that's about all I have. I, I just, you know, please bring us in for, for how we can help. Because I think we're all seeing the same challenges, you know, we're having it in our cares campus in, in the ability to attract, recruit and retain providers. And, you know, you're having it and our rural hospitals are having it, everybody's having these same challenges. And I, I just feel like we all kind of rise and fall together here. And, you know, the problems at University Hospital directly impact the county, directly impact the city, directly impact all of our residents. And, you know, the issues that our residents are feeling, our resident physicians are feeling, directly impact the care that we all receive, that our families receive, that, that the needy in our community receive. So, you know, any way that we can support your, your state legislative requests, ideas that you have for how we grow that, the medical school, how we grow that pipeline, the B A M D program? I've heard incredible things about that and that's really just coming to fruition after, you know, years of building the pipeline. So I just think we can't afford to lose any more providers and, and we've all got to be growing in the same direction. So thank you for what you do and, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you.
Madam Vice Chair.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Benson.
One more question for Dr. Becker. What's your reimbursement for uninsured transient patients?
Uninsured patients is zero.
Right. And so we, we do have a growing population and U and M H is where they go to. If they're having a drug episode and, and we're, we're fighting that as well. But that's part of the thing. So you, you increase expenses without increasing revenue at all, like you said. So thank you for taking care of them.
We're proud to do it.
If you don't, nobody will, so thank you. But, yeah, we've kind of created a lot of these problems here. And so to blame U and M H for not giving enough raises, I think it's going to be a, a, a group solution. Not just saying, hey, pay more money than you don't have. Economics doesn't work that way. So, yeah, there's a lot of issues that we need to address so that you all can get the pay raises you deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson, I just want to that point to make sure we're also clear. And I 100% agree with, you know, that, and I said it at the top of this meeting, that the, my district holds so many, including the University Hospital, that cares for our most vulnerable, most needed populations. And our state does provide indigent care that U and M is the recipient of, that, so it's not $0, right? There's indigent care funds, there's the care hospital funds, as well as increased Medicaid reimbursements. So just to say, and I, you know, just to make sure we're clear about where money is coming and going. And that our state is, and us are all trying with Mill Levy, all the different pieces that come in to try and support our public and our teaching hospital. I want to first thank, I have so much respect for you, CEO Becker. I think you are courageous, you are so smart and innovative. I'm so grateful for the M D C work and our, our Crisis Stabilization Center. And, you know, just, I grew up with a sick father and so I was in hospital all the time and I went to every single hospital and it was always U and M that provided the most quality care, that kind of loving bedside manner. And I was just in there earlier this year with my partner and again, treated with the kind of loving care. And I think that's because of the quality of our residents. For some reason, that land of enchantment really happens, right? People come here or are born here and they want to stay here, even though it, all the things Commissioner Benson said are true. For some reason, we just love this place. And I, I know it's thankful to the, to the hospital. I also ask for you, I believe you to be so smart, I've seen you do incredible things, including what we're doing at, at M D C and, and all the ways you come in thoughtfully, think about how do we stop having people in the hallways? And I hope it's back again, I just feel like I get to learn so much from these quarterly reports. I do want to, I, I know you're hearing this loud and clear, but I think the priorities of the U and M residents, I think there's more, they're asking, of course, for raises. I also have heard that they're asking for like Juneteenth and MLK holidays to be recognized as pay holidays. Is that, are things like that, that are on the table, might be something that could start to be negotiated on? As far as I understand, there's, they're sort of not back to the table. And if there's an opportunity to think about some of those things that also might help keep our important residents. And, and a plan, right? Like if we are to say that we have a plan to be in comparison with our peer institutions in the Southwest in a few years, or in those places. And I, it's only because I believe that you can, from all that I've gotten to learn about you. So, yeah, not that you have to answer the Juneteenth and MLK date now, but I think that there are other also additional considerations that would be nice to consider for our residents.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Again, thanks for this quarterly report. I appreciate you being here in person and we'll see you again soon, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we will move on to item. We'll move on to public comment for reals this time. So each person has two minutes and you will be alerted about your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you're speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record to maintain order and decorum. And in the spirit of professionalism and respect to everyone, speakers must adhere to the two-minute limit. If the conduct of the presenter violates the rules, they may be subject to removal. Julianne, please call the names of people signed up for public comment.
Madam Chair, we have eight signed up this evening, all in person. And we will start off with Mr. Don Schrader, followed by Ramona Goolsbee, followed by Holly Dietz.
Don Schrader. Millions of Christians believe the Bible is the inspired word of God. Joshua, chapter 10, verse 40. Joshua defeated the whole land. He utterly destroyed all that breathed as the Lord God of Israel commanded. Deuteronomy, chapter 7, verse 2. And when the Lord God gives them over to you and you defeat them, then you must utterly destroy them. You shall make no covenant with them and show no mercy to them. Nothing Hitler ever said was more evil than these Bible verses. Nothing Stalin, US presidents, or many more bloody dictators ever said was more evil than these Bible verses. Total mass murder commanded by the Lord God of Israel. Holocaust in Palestine, more than 3,000 years before the Nazi Holocaust of 6 million Jews plus gays, gypsies, communists, handicapped people, Jehovah's Witnesses. I strongly compliment thousands of US Jews who publicly protest and damn the Israeli government's torture and murder of many thousands of Palestinian children, women, and men in Gaza.
Ramona Goolsbee, followed by Holly Dietz, followed by Linda Dietz.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair Barboah and Commissioners. My name is Ramona Goolsbee. First, I want to remind everyone here, elections have consequences. Public policy is directed by those who are elected into office. What we see occurring in our communities, both good and bad, is a direct result of public policy. I come to the commission meeting twice a month to continue to advocate for secure and transparent elections. I worked the election this last week. And secure and transparent elections is exactly what everyone who came wants. We were not the minority. People were coming in and handing me their ID. I did not ask for it, they wanted me to have it. I still had to ask them verbally to verify their name, their year of birth, and their address, even when I had the ID. The people taking the initiative to provide their ID helped. It worked really well, especially when you had someone who was difficult to understand or their name was difficult to spell. It limited miscommunication and increased efficiency. I only had two people that didn't offer their ID and that's okay, because the state of New Mexico doesn't require that they show their ID. People were paying attention to the process. We had people thank us for being there. It was an educational and a rewarding experience. I was told that there were some issues in Bernalillo, as with many other counties. Nothing's perfect. I do recommend that the clerk and her staff do a debriefing, either in person or by survey of every person that worked and, or watched the election. I recommend that all the raw data and the compilation be provided to this commission, once it is completed, as a reference. I also recommend that an action plan be written and provided with a report on the debriefing for the 2023 election. Thank you.
Holly Dietz, followed by Linda Dietz, followed by Victoria Martin, followed by John Beltri.
Hello, County Commissioners. I'm here to make some comments and just questions about Sandia Ranch and the lease with the school, ASLA. The first one being, the lease on the property that's being put out now is what the county is offering 660, offering to the school, 660,000 over 50 years. This is a one-time payment and no interest involved. I consulted with a commercial realtor at Sun Vista and with the, he said at a minimum for 4.6 acres, it should be between 50,000 to 100,000 per year for the lease on the property with a 2% annual increase. So I would encourage you to find out, because at this point, it feels like we are giving the property away at taxpayers' expense. Two, at the public, public comment, not public comment, at the Bureau of Finance October meeting, Enrico Grotta stated that the school, ASLA, is intending to be open to the community, i.e. serve as a community center where people can meet and use the gym. We, the neighborhood, as well as the community. as well as the community, would like to see that written in the ASLA lease, so that that is a guarantee, instead of just a comment made at a meeting. I.e., again, we would like to see that the public is welcome at the school on the lease. Because typically, when, when children are involved, there's a lot of requirements that need to be met for the people being in their space. Three, there was a comment asked about why there was so much confusion from the neighborhood, and lack of understanding of why ASLA is moving into the property. The property, the, we went to the Neighborhood Association meetings and met with Parks and Recreation for four years, and it was never stated that ASLA was involved in the dynamics of living at that Sandia Ranch property.
I'm sorry, ma'am, that's your two minutes. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioners, my name is Linda Dietz, and I live at 7017 Edith Boulevard Northeast, Albuquerque, New Mexico, and I've lived in the area for 30 years. I'm a plaintiff in a lawsuit that challenges the commission's rights to use Sandia Ranch for school purposes. I'm also here to make, today, to make the same challenge. As of today, the Bureau of Finance has not received a fully executed lease between you and the school. The issues in the lawsuit have not been resolved. The school has entered into a two-year lease with APS for the La Luz Elementary School. It seems the voters, APS, the county, and the school have negotiated a win-win situation. Why are we not taking advantage of that? Your legal advisor, Mr. Garcia, assured the Bureau of Finance, you will prevail in the lawsuit. You have not. To proceed without clarity on the permissible use of the land, not the money, the land, seems to say the school is a done deal. It is not. Why not defer the final execution until the permitted use of the land, which is a district court decision, is determined, rather than engaging what we consider a subterfuge, which has been hidden over 10 years for this simple bait and switch? It was 10 years ago in December, when John Barney, who is here today, invited our neighborhood president, Linda Trujillo, and her husband, to walk around Sandia Ranch and consider the school use. Rafe Martinez was his guest. We had no idea the county planned to put the school on the ranch until 2019. That's five years later. We had been meeting with the county for four years prior to that, trying to determine what the community and the county needed for that location. In 2019, I, oh, I had some good closing comments. Please honor your promise to make, you made to the voters in 2014, to use the land for recreational purposes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Victoria Martin, followed by John Veltre, followed by Herado Cionello.
Victoria Martin. A large group of New Mexicans have been studying election results in our state since the November 2020 election. All Commissioners across the state received a report in October 2021. That report can be found online today. The link is within the handout provided to you. We will continue to bring you information which shows that your certification of elections since November 2020 should be withdrawn, and on subsequent election, certification should be withheld. The overhandled information you have been receiving for certification follows neither the law nor the discipline required to safeguard a secure official process. Between July 24 and August 26, 2023, the Secretary of State decided to change her billboard for election results. You have screenshots showing you that in July, the billboard proclaimed registered voters. No matter how far back you go into past year's election results today, the screen has been updated to say eligible voters. The handout you received also includes county commissioners' races from 2020 and 2022. In 2020, Bernalillo's District 4 is the twin of Sandoval's District 2. In 2022, Bernalillo's District 5 is the twin of Sandoval's District 3. In 2022, having 712,000 people voting for governor, while at the same time having over 1 million Human Services Department's customers, tells you the model is doomed to fail.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Veltre, New Mexico Election Transparency Network Chairman. I came prepared to talk about election transparency tonight, and as the chairman, I should talk about election transparency. But I'm going to wait till December 12, and I'll talk about that then. Tonight, I want to talk about the University of New Mexico Hospital situation. This is at max capacity. The overflow that I heard is almost 100% on the alternate facility. 60 to 79 patients waiting in the queue, just to be seen or maybe get a bed. No one wants to address the elephant in the room, so I guess I will. I talked in the last meeting about open borders and the Fentanyl problem we have here in Albuquerque, and how it will only compound daily, as long as those borders are open. The root cause is the southern border. As long as it remains open, we have hundreds of people coming in a day, thousands a month, hundreds of thousands a year. We have uninsured people coming in. How many of those do you think are uninsured? Probably, I'd say, all of them. Let's get serious, and let's talk to our legislative body up in Santa Fe. Let's see what we can do to close those borders. That's the root of the problem. This problem will only continue. These people will continue to work their butts off for pennies. We will lose people to this state, to other states. I wouldn't want to be a doctor and work here. I would honestly ask each of you, would you? Keep that to yourself. I'll see myself out. Happy Thanksgiving, and I'll see you next month. Thank you.
Herado Cionello, followed by Robert Beatty.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair and County Commissioners. Thank you for serving. There's a large group of New Mexicans have been studying election results in our state since November 2020 election. All Commissioners across the state received a report in October of 2021. That report can be found online today. The link is within the handout provided to you. The Commissioners of Bernalillo County received a copy of a follow-up report regarding the 2020, 2022 primary election for governor and sheriff in Bernalillo and Sandoval Counties. We will continue to bring you information which shows that your certification of elections since November 2020 should be withdrawn. For subsequent election, certification should be withheld. The overhandled information you have been receiving for certification follows neither the law nor the discipline required to safeguard a secure official process. The handout provider gives you an example of a fraction of what we are seeing. For some reason, the 2020 election for United States Senator and the 2022 election for Governor came in at 100% in Bernalillo County. That is still published today on the Secretary of State's website. The second-place candidate in both races happens to be the same person, just the pursued office is different. His second-place finish in Bernalillo County is the same percentage for both races. Second place are of equal percentage when you look at statewide results and Sandoval County results also. The numbers hitting the same percentage for second place statewide, Bernalillo County and for Sandoval County in 2020 and 2022, rounded off, for those listening without a handout, are as follows. US Senate being from 2020, and Governor being from 2022, state total for US Senate, 917,000 compared to state local governor, 712,000. Both are 45.6% for second place. Check that out. Bernal County for US Senators is 316,000 compared to Bernal County. Governor, 245,000. Both are 41% for second place. Thank you.
Thank you. Yay. Welcome, Mr. Beatty.
Thanks. Robert Beatty, um, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Commission. My name's Robert Beatty. I'm the Director of Robert F. Kennedy Charter School, uh, and I'm on the Board of the Southwest Educational Partners for Training. And these are young people that work with that SWEP program, uh, in partnership with the New Mexicans to Prevent Gun Violence. Um, and so I've been here before, and they've made little garden shovels. As you can see, they've, uh, they've improved on their design and their work. Uh, this is a xylophone and an operational electric guitar, made out of complete gun parts. So, so it's important to me, because it's a gun problem. There's a gun violence problem in our community. And these young people are part of the solution. You can do metal detectors, you can do police on campus. This is young people involved in the solution. I'm looking for some funding from the county, right? So I'd like to, I've been working on this. I've been reaching out. So I'd like to be able to meet with somebody from the county manager's office. I actually have some money from the legislature that I need a partner to flow it to. Um, and so this is important. Uh, I know that Miranda Viscoli with the Mexicans to Prevent Gun Violence also asked to comment, do public comment. I hope that they'll let you, uh, because they take unwanted guns off the street. Cut them up into pieces, give them to these students to make art and music instruments out of. Um, so I just want to appreciate the young people that have worked on this. Uh, we need a little funding just to keep it going, right? I also just want to say that the Department of Health has not flowed money, uh, for school-based health centers. Um, and it's almost December, and there continues to be a problem. I'm saying that because I'm on the Steering Committee of the Behavioral Health Initiative. I'm going to be addressing it during the Steering Committee tomorrow, and I just didn't want it to be a surprise. Thank you. And I hope you'll let Miranda do her public comment. I just, they're great young people, and they're part of the solution.
Thank you. Yes. Ms. Charlie West.
Mr. Beatty, I just wanted to thank you for being here, and more importantly, thank these young people for being here and their leadership, uh, really confronting this gun violence problem head-on, and, uh, creating some solutions in their own community and in their own school. And I just want to commend you guys for your work, and, uh, let's, let's talk. I'm happy to do what I can to help you all.
Appreciate it. And please, somebody from the county manager's office, so we can figure out how to do this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you so much, I think, you know, making instruments, that instruments heal, music heals people, so you all are doing beautiful work. Thank you.
They're going to make flutes, they're going to put holes in the gun barrels for the gun barrels, put holes in them, right?
Yes.
That's the pitch.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Beatty.
And I hope you'll let Miranda do public comment.
Where is Miranda?
I know she called in prior to the meeting.
Miranda, um, I guess, because I'm the chair I've got today.
Um, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair. My name's Miranda Viscoli. I'm co-president of New Mexicans to Prevent Gun Violence. It's been an honor to partner with the SWEP youth and Robert Beatty on our Guns to Gardens program. On Tuesday evenings, we have hired, um, New Mexico artist Jeremy Thomas to teach youth how to forge dismantled guns into gardening tools, as you know, and now musical instruments. We also had Mexican artist Pedro Reyes, who lives in Mexico City, um, teach the youth via Zoom on how to create musical instruments, as you saw this evening, again, from our dismantled firearms, from our gun buybacks. This program not only teaches youth crafts and trades, but it creates a much-needed space where we can talk about the issue of gun violence prevention, as the dismantled guns are no longer objects that kill, but objects that sustain life and now give music. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's it?
Madam Vice Chair, I, I was late putting my name on the list. I wanted to, I'd also briefly address the commission.
One more. I'm going to probably get in trouble, but who cares? Fire me.
I, I promise. Um, I'm Dr. William Wiley. I'm in the Psychiatry Department. I'm a fellow. I chose to continue training here in New Mexico. Um, I wanted to thank you for your questions tonight about the negotiations. Um, I think that the administrators of the hospital would like you all to believe that this is just about money. We're actually bargaining our entire contract this year. And so, Madam Vice Chair, I thank you for your, uh, question about the other things in the contract. This isn't about just money, it's about respect. Um, we asked for more vacation time to let us spend time with families to, to bring us into line with national averages. We asked for the ability to take bereavement leave, uh, for people that we consider our families. Residents don't take sick time. We're not making up dead fake relatives just to get a day off. Um, the hospital has met all of these asks with silence, often. They've refused to negotiate. Um, in fact, it's been almost three weeks since we heard from them. Um, this is a pattern. It's not my first negotiations. This is not the first time I've seen these things. Um, they have an opportunity this year to turn this relationship around. I hope that they take it. Um, but by talking only about money, they are continuing to stonewall us. Um, speaking of which, uh, there was some talk about, uh, the state and how those funds flow through the state. Two years ago, when we asked for a raise that would bring us into the, uh, into line with our regional average, not national average, I don't care about those coasts where people are making $100,000, just our regional average. Um, we spent a lot of time lobbying, uh, the state legislature, and they were very receptive. They were supportive. They wanted to work with us, uh, to make those funds available for raises. But when it came time for UNM to partner with them, they were nowhere to be found. Um, they ghosted us. Um, so I just wanted to make that point, that it's not just about money, it's about respect. Um, by their last numbers, 25% of UNM residents stay, 75% leave. Thank you.
That is the end of public comment, and we're moving on to approval of minutes to start our agenda. Um, I move to approve October 24, 2023 Administrative Meeting Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Aye.
Madam Chair Baca.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have approval. Item number nine, approval of consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please provide ordinance numbers for 9J and 9K, and resolution numbers for 9E and 9N.
Yes, Madam Chair. For item 9J, ordinance number 2023-26. 9K is ordinance 2023-27. Item 9E is FR 2023-120, and 9N is FR 2023-121.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public. Therefore, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Um, Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Quesada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I would just really like to thank, uh, the commission, and I'd like to thank, uh, Michael Brasher for, again, serving on the Detention Facility Advisory Board. He's, you know, I'm just telling you, he's, he's a great, great man. He's been, uh, a great community leader. Uh, I also want to congratulate him on his, uh, induction to the New Mexico Music Hall of Fame. Um, he has been the one, uh, uh, voice, uh, to promote our New Mexico music and our New Mexico artists, and, and he's done it for a big part of his life. And just so you all know, it's still the only radio station that plays New Mexico music. None of the other ones do. And, you know, it's kind of a little, it's disheartening, but it's also very refreshing that he's held true to that. And, uh, you know, he's served as the chair, and he served as the vice chair, uh, to this, uh, board. And as you all know, we're very appreciative of people who volunteer their time, and I just want to thank you for, for your support tonight. And I want to thank, uh, Michael Brasher for being such a great, great New Mexican. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Point of personal privilege, and to, to tack on to what Commissioner Quesada said, uh, and, and might have left out, actually, Commissioner Brasher, former Commissioner Brasher, actually, uh, sat in, in this seat, representing the, the residents of District 5. Um, and I believe that, uh, his, his radio station that he operates is, uh, often the number-one radio station in the, the state of New Mexico. So congratulations on that, and thank you for your service. Um, the other item that I wanted to just, uh, not discuss, but just request, um... and might have left out, actually, Commissioner Brasher, former Commissioner Brasher, actually, sat in this seat representing the residents of District 5. And I believe that his radio station that he operates is often the number-one radio station in the state of New Mexico. So congratulations on that, and thank you for your service. The other item that I wanted to just, not discuss, but just request, based on an item on our consent agenda, I'd like to request that our Community Service Division, our Planning Services, maybe at our next meeting or an upcoming meeting next year, prepare a presentation for us on how our zone change process works so that myself and fellow Commissioners can better understand that process and our role in that.
Thank you, Commissioner, both Commissioners. Okay, moving on to item 10, Adoption of Resolution 10A. Commissioner, support for the City of Albuquerque appeal to Supreme Court on the encampments. Madam Clerk, please provide a resolution number.
Yes, Madam Chair. Item 10A is AR 2023-122.
Thank you. And this is sponsored by Chair Baca and Commissioner Olivas. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, first of all, to start us off here, I'd like to make a motion for approval of this resolution to support the City of Albuquerque on encampments.
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
Madam Chair? So, you know, I just kind of wanted to give a little background on this as we consider this tonight. We know that this injunction has come down from a judge in a case regarding encampments and our, the city's treatment of individuals experiencing homelessness, an incredibly important topic that, you know, we discuss at length here all the time and issues related to that with behavioral health and criminal justice involvement. But at the root of it, there's a few things in this injunction that the judge has ordered. And this resolution, I think, really takes a nuanced approach. It discusses in here, first of all, some of the things that I believe that the county and the city have done over the last 10 years, if you will, that have really tried to tackle this problem head-on. We've added a pretty amazing, though still inadequate, number of housing units, affordable housing units, transitional housing units, like our Tiny Home Village, other resources like that. We've stood up our Behavioral Health Initiative, which, you know, we all know we need to continue to improve. But that initiative has offered an incredible amount of assistance to individuals experiencing homelessness, experiencing substance abuse issues, and stood up new initiatives while supporting existing providers, nonprofits, government entities. We're working on the Gateway Center with the City of Albuquerque. We are working on the West Side Housing Shelter with the City of Albuquerque. We have our own wellness hotel that we've stood up. The City of Albuquerque has stood up wellness motels. They're working on motel conversions. Both the city and the county have taken really progressive views on other housing issues like casitas and looking at zone changes and ways that we can incentivize more housing development because ultimately, we know that homelessness is at its core a housing problem, right? If you cannot afford housing, you can't be in it. And I think that we've made a lot of progress. But unfortunately, the scope, size, and just incredible complexity of this problem has outpaced even the additional effort that I think the city and the county and our combined leadership have put in to try to address this problem. So that being said, I think that this resolution takes a nuanced approach, outlining, first of all, what we have done and what we are continuing to do and what we will continue to do and hopefully get better at. Things like our Housing Collaborative Initiative and our collaboration with the city on our opioid funding. We are not asleep at the wheel here. And I think that for anybody that pays attention to this stuff, it's clear that the city and the county are talking about this stuff at every single meeting, every single day. There's not a day that this doesn't come up for every one of us, I know. But this injunction really presents some really intractable issues that we have to address. So the nuance in here, we spell out that there are parts of this injunction that we really need to respect because they're grounded in constitutional law. There's provisions in here talking about the need for proper notice, proper storage, you know, obeying the constitutional search and seizure provisions that we're all entitled to. And understanding that for some individuals, the things in their shopping cart or in their tent are all their worldly possessions. And there may be things in there that some of us might not think are valuable. And there might be things in there that are very valuable to any of us, you know, passport, ID, Medicaid card, things like that. But the bottom line is that I think all government entities that work with the unhoused have to be cognizant of the judge's warning and ruling on this. But the piece in here that this resolution and that I urge my colleagues' support on tonight really addresses the issue of encampments in public places. And to simplify this, this injunction order states that individuals can now camp on any public property unless it holds a critical safety function. So, you know, the injunction will not allow you to camp in the middle of a roadway, but essentially has ordered that camping be legalized in parks, open spaces, libraries, outside of libraries, community centers, trails, other public spaces in the city of Albuquerque. And because of that, you know, these are government spaces. We know that this can easily apply to the county, to the state, to the Water Authority, to entities across the board here in the metro area and across the state, frankly. And all of that is grounded in an Eighth Amendment protection that the judge cites, which I believe is really flawed. You know, that amendment really deals with cruel and unusual punishment, asking individuals to remove their encampments from spaces that are not designed for camping. They're not spaces that are, that was never the intended use of a park or a library or an open space was for camping purposes. And so allowing individuals to use those spaces, I believe, is actually the cruel and unusual punishment here because we know that these are unsafe spaces for those individuals camping there who are often victims of violence, sexual violence, physical violence, extreme trauma in any time that individuals living on the streets unhoused, but in large congregant encampments even more so. And so it's really just deplorable that this is the place that we believe we should have the unhoused, that it's acceptable to say that the unhoused should live on the streets. That is not a solution to this crisis, to say that that's where people deserve to live. I don't agree with that. I think that everyone deserves to have dignity. They deserve to live in spaces that are designed and suitable for human habitation. And this injunction creates the exact opposite of that. It creates a situation where individuals are living in an unsafe space, in an unsafe manner, in an unsanitary way. Because we know that, you know, where individuals are camping, they're unhoused. There are no bathrooms. There are no facilities for them to clean. This is a public health issue as well. And of course, we know that, you know, not all unhoused are drug users, but there may be drug use going on. There may be syringes, feces, all these other issues. This is a compounding public health problem. And placing that problem in front of or in public facilities, in parks where kids play, in open space areas where people recreate, is not a solution. That makes the problem worse, and that is putting those very individuals, which this injunction seeks to help, at greater risk. And so what this resolution does is it asks our county legal department to support the city on those grounds that these spaces are not meant, never were meant, and never should be meant for camping. That is not a solution to this problem, asking people to camp outdoors in our public spaces. We can do much better than that, and I believe we've already made a lot of headway in that direction. And I want to support the city in their appeal because this is not acceptable. This is not the city that we want to live in, and this will not move us towards a safer public where people want to live and where people want to be. And it will not help those individuals that are unhoused to get housing, to get to recovery, to find a sense of purpose and meaning. And so with that, you know, I want to open up the floor and really encourage my colleagues. You know, I hope that we have a robust discussion on this, but really encourage my colleagues' support because we can't afford to leave the city hanging here. We are part of the city. The city's part of the county, and we have to stand together here.
Thank you, Commissioner Olivas. Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to applaud Commissioners Barboa, or Olivas, and Madam Chair Baca. And I fully support this. I think the judge either overstapped or misinterpreted the Eighth Amendment. I just had a friend in Rio Rancho call me two weekends ago from jail because he was arrested for speeding, and there was a bench warrant that he was unaware of, or he had forgotten about a prior ticket three years before. He had to spend the full weekend in jail, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And he asked for my advice. I said, "Yeah, show up in court. Don't speed." But that's not considered cruel and unusual punishment, and yet, for a speeding ticket versus forcing unhoused homeless people off of public property. And Commissioner Olivas spoke to those who cannot afford housing. But there's a lot of them out there that will not afford it, unfortunately, because of drug addiction, which is its own problem. But there's a difference with what the judge said. You have to have enough beds to cover every homeless person. But there's a lot of homeless people that don't want beds because of their enslavement to addiction. And so this, you're right, this would give them a free pass to convert all of our public properties into their own, whatever they want. Meanwhile, what about the rights of the taxpayers who voted to increase GRT for behavioral resources? So they recognize the problem, and they want to solve it. But now, they're now being forced to have other tax dollars be spent in ways that they weren't intended. In public libraries or schools, or, I mean, it opens the arena. So I think this was well drafted, and I support the city in their appeal. And I hope that the appeal is successful. Thank you. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. I definitely support this. Thank you for bringing it, Chair Baca and Commissioner Olivas. I also just must, of course, remark that I was at an open, Marble Open Space had its ribbon cutting. Commissioner Hart Stevins, Commissioner Colley before me sort of really led the charge to make that happen. But it was a beaut, it's a beautiful open space, urban agriculture, urban open space in the middle of our very busy city, close to Expo, New Mexico State Fairgrounds. And I was real honored to be there and be able to be a part of that ribbon cutting that was so beautiful. This beautiful, when we got there, there was a man walking around because he had hurt his leg, he had a cane. He said that, you know, he can't just choose to walk down the streets because the pavement's uneven and he's trying to rehabilitate. So he was already using this, not even fully completed, open space that we've created. At the same time, there were all these neighbors that had been part of this project for many years now. They were out there. They were so excited about this new space. They were already talking about the workshops they were going to hold. And of course, they couldn't help but talk to me about the fact that they're also worried that homeless people or unsheltered neighbors are going to be using that space. But my district, like I say, were the one that doesn't turn anyone away. And they were, you know, what they were saying was like, they see, of course, just like we all do in their neighborhoods, and they're worried. They're worried about that they're cold. They try to take them blankets. They try to take them food or nonperishable goods. I could see the care while they're talking to me both, and they sort of hesitated to say, "And we're a little worried that they're going to come and be in this beautiful open space that we want. We've supported. We've been a part of for this whole time." So I just want us to remember that our communities are holding that very delicate balance between that they care about. I think our communities as a whole care when we see people out there suffering, the weather, not having a place to use the bathroom or take a shower, access to water. Our neighborhoods care about that, and they want access to the things that we all do for our families and communities to have access to healthy, open spaces. I would push back a little bit to say that people don't want homes. I'd say that, or a place to be, a bed. Because we, as governments, often make those beds too inaccessible, right? We can't have, we both have to be, we are the public entity, and we have to be the place because we have, as Commissioner Benson has said, pulled out of our own taxpayer dollars to make behavioral health initiatives, to make services available. Those services have to be acceptable, meeting them where they're at. We can't say they don't want beds. There's reasons why they're not taking the beds. The ones that are available are way too far. How would you feel if you didn't have a ride? You didn't have access? You don't know whether you're really going to be safe there, and you get all the way to the west side of the WEC. What can you do if it doesn't feel like a safe place? You can't, you could hitch a bike your way back, I guess, right? And then the places that are available in time have, just for too long, turned away folks. And even as we're trying to decrease those turnaways, we have to still build trust. We've been turning away people and denying them for so long that there's not that trust in community. So if we're taking people just for the night, then that means they're not sleeping behind my grandma's house or in the alleyways. If we're taking people for just the night and they're not accepting programs in the morning, that's okay because eventually, when they're ready, we'll be there. But we have to be able to take them in because that's what taxpayers are doing. They both don't want to see. They don't want the burden sleeping at night knowing that there's a man and his daughter or another person sitting out there in the cold, and that they think, "I should take them a blanket. I should go make sure they have some food." At the same time, and that we can and should be providing those. So I definitely support this resolution. I just wanted to, of course, make that opportunity. I think while we're doing this, we have to think about if we're not going to want folks to be in these spaces, then we do need to increase those access to beds. Things like, you know, ACS, the Albuquerque Community Safety, our own mobile crisis teams, and how we do find those folks that are ready to get to one of our shelters. Thank you, Commissioner Quesada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I think what people don't see is the work that we do do. It doesn't get a whole lot of press. You don't see children and mothers on the street, you know. You see people with an addiction problem. But I'm going to have to agree with Commissioner Benson, and I'm just going to tell you, when I have meetings on my side, I always meet at the Starbucks on 98th Street. We have a lot of homeless people up on West Central, as you know. So there's always someone sitting there at the, in the patio. So I'm having a meeting with a guy from LA, you know, really great meeting, very positive. But I couldn't help but keep staring at the homeless guy there with the glass of water. And so when the meeting ended, I told the guy, "Thanks for coming out. I appreciate the meeting." And then I got up. I went over to him, the homeless guy, and I said, "Hey, man, have you eaten?" And he goes, "Yeah, no, not today." And I go, "Well, hang on. I'm gonna go get you a sandwich and another water." So I went in. I got a water. I came back. I was standing there with the sandwich, and I go, "Look, dude, I know you don't know me, man, but I can make a call right now. Within 10 minutes, we could have somebody here. We'll help, we'll pick you up, and we'll provide services, and, you know, I mean, if you need treatment. I mean, we have all these facilities and all these avenues to really, you know, improve, you know, your situation." And he looked at me dead in the eye, and he goes, "Why do you hate me, bro?" And I go, "I don't hate you. I'm trying to help you." He goes, "I don't think you do. I think you look at me, and you're judging me, and you're disgusted by me. But I'm going to tell you something." He goes, "You're the one with all the problems. You're the one that has to get up every morning and go figure out how you go pay all that debt and owe all these people and pay all those taxes." He goes, "I have none of those problems." He goes, "Just so you know, I'm happy. I'm happy right where I'm at. I don't owe nobody nothing. I don't have to live in a single place. Nobody, there's no rules for me to live under. You live by all those rules, not me." He goes, "I'll take your sandwich, but I don't want anything else from you." And I was out debated. I had nothing to say, which is rare, as you all know. And I had absolutely nothing to say. I told him, "Enjoy the sandwich," and I drove home. And so that just kind of goes to the point is, you know, we want to help people, but they have to want to help themselves. And I'm always going to be in support of more housing and more places for people to go. I also agree, and you know I have, when we did the Tiny Home Village, I was very surprised that the number-one rule to qualify for the Tiny Home Village, I didn't qualify for it, you know? And I said that publicly. I'm like, "How is it that a commissioner can't go to transitional housing if he needed it, right? Which is really weird to me." And so they changed all that. Look where we're at now. So I think we are making compromises. We are moving forward. But I do agree. I agree that public parks are just that. They're there for everybody to enjoy, but nobody to live, right? It's not a place for you to be living. We're not mad at you. We don't hate you. You know, we want to help you. We are providing things for when you decide that day We are providing things for when you decide that day, or the next day, or the next year, that you're actually not happy. And that you do want to change, right? And you do want to have that opportunity. We've worked very hard up here to make sure that those places stay open. We use a lot of money to keep those places open, and we use a lot of money to continue to grow places for you to put a roof over your head, and we'll continue to do that. But I do support this. I know it doesn't make a difference, I know the court's going to make their own decisions. But I think that the stance that we're saying tonight is, we want to help you, we care about you, we respect your constitutional right. But what we're saying is, public spaces are for all of public, just not some of the public. And that's why I support this resolution. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I know you want to move a motion.
I think I already did, actually.
Second, great. If there's not any further discussion, Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kessada?
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca?
Yes, and I wanted to apologize for not being there in person. I had a recent surgery that did not allow me to be there. But I stand ready to work with all of my colleagues and our community and the City of Albuquerque on the effort that we have before us for the unhoused, and creating more housing is extremely important. But this is a humanitarian issue as well as, and so thank you all for all of your statements. I really appreciate working with all of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
I just wanted to thank my colleagues for their support on this, and Commissioner Baca for her partnership here. And especially, I wanted to thank our legal team, Ken and Mara, and everybody that worked on this and helped me draft this. So thank you for your support of our commission and of our community.
Thank you. I assume we move to item 10C now. Oh, or 10, nope, 10B, Finance, Parks and Migration Reimbursement Resolution.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I am Denise Benavides. I'm the Principal Financial Analyst for Finance. The analysis performed in preparation for the 2023 Geo Bond Sale projected that there would be excess cash in the Parks and Recreation and Open Space Bonds until the 2024 bond sale. However, during the monitoring of the bond project activity during 2023, it was noted that the department had expended more cash in the first three months of FY24 than it had previously expended in a full fiscal year. Based on the current monthly spending projections provided by PROS, additional funding is needed prior to the issuance of the Geo Series 2024 to avoid delays of current projects in process. As a result, a reimbursement resolution is required, which must meet the requirements of the U.S. Treasury Regulations declaring the intent to reimburse the general fund with proceeds from a tax-exempt bond. Therefore, staff requests the approval of the financial resolution to appropriate the funding from General Fund Fund Balance and the administrative resolution declaring the intent of the county to reimburse the general fund from proceeds of the county's 2024 general obligation bonds prior to the issuance of the Geo Bond Series. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Benavides. And sorry, Madam Clerk, can I have you please provide a resolution number for item 10B? One and two?
Yes, Madam Chair. For item 10B, one, FR 2023-123. And for 10B, item two, it's AR 2023-124.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. And now, back to Denise Benavides. Is there any question? Yes, Commissioner Olivas and Commissioner Benson.
I just, just a comment, I wanted to thank John and Enrico and Debbie Jo and that whole team for just moving these projects and, you know, getting dirt moving and getting buildings built and swimming pools and all the good stuff that you guys are building for our community. So thank you for what you do.
Yeah, me too. My first question, when Ms. Benavides and Shirley Reagan brought this to my attention, I was like, does this go by our plan and our? So I'm really glad, and thanks to all the time that John Barti's always teach me how this sort of works. It all gets built up, and then a lot gets spent, and then we have to go back. So thank you for making this happen. Looks like you have a motion in a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kessada?
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10C, Office of Criminal Justice Behavioral Health Initiatives. Manager Pam Acosta to present.
Hello. All right. Good evening, Madam Chair Baca, Madam Vice Chair Barboia and Commissioners. I'm Pam Acosta, the Behavioral Health Initiative Senior Manager. Bringing before you a proposal to approve an allocation from the City of Albuquerque in the amount of $1.5 million in opioid settlement award funding to be received by Burnaleo County. On October 2nd, 2023, with strong support and advocacy from City Councilor Clarissa Pena, the City of Albuquerque approved $1,500,000 from their awarded opioid settlement funding to support medicated assisted treatment services at the Metropolitan Detention Center. Medicated assisted treatment, also known as MATS services, is an approved use of settlement funds in accordance with the New Mexico Opioid Allocation Agreement and is an evidence-based treatment option for those with an opioid disorder which helps prevent drug overdose. Currently, MDC offers induction and maintenance of both methadone treatment and suboxone treatment to those entering or in custody. The motion before you this evening are as follows. Approve a financial resolution budgeting $1.5 million from the City of Albuquerque to fund medicated assisted treatment to support the rehabilitation and reentry process for people incarcerated at MDC. Thus, authorizing the county manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Albuquerque, and also authorize the county manager to execute any subsequent agreements to the IGA and all agreements related to MATS services at MDC. Unfortunately, Amber Salazar, who performs contract management on the suboxone program, had to leave. But I am here and stand for any questions.
Thank you, Manager Acosta. Any comments? Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to commend our behavioral health staff for their work on this, but also, really importantly, the City of Albuquerque, and specifically, Councilor Pena, for her leadership here. I know that, you know, often there's this turf war between the city and the county. And, you know, we give them money, but they don't give us money, and we both kind of say the same thing back and forth. And, you know, I think this is just evidence that maybe that happened in the past, I don't know. But I think we're really working well together now, and this is just proof. And I want to commend also the county manager for her advocacy in this. And just all of our staff at the county and at the city, and the leadership of the mayor and the council to support this important program at the jail, and, you know, how this helps us reintegrate citizens in our community back into productive roles in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Vice Chair. Yeah, okay. Go ahead. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Sorry, I've been calling you Madam Chair all night, just because you're sharing. But Madam Vice Chair, you know, yeah, we've always partnered with the city when it comes to programs and programming and looking at what we do with behavioral health. And, you know, the Respite Center down in the South Valley, it's a city-county, you know? We do that kind of stuff. I think where our disconnect really is, is just, you know, capital when it comes to, you know, infrastructure, road improvement. That's really where the separation is. I think we've always partnered with that. And, you know, and I think that, you know, as long as we agree on some of these programming and how we are moving forward on behavioral health, of course, we're way more powerful together. And so I also would like to thank Councilor Pena for, you know, thinking ahead and definitely providing something to MDC, which has always seemed to be, have fallen on us, right? So this is actually the first kind of olive branch to look at MDC in a way that's going to support it. Because, you know, I've always spoke that, I think it's everybody's problem, it's MDC, not just ours. And so I appreciate this offer, and I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. And yes, thank you to Councilor Pena. This is actually, this is exactly what I was advocating for when I was asking the commission to consider a carve-out from the opioid settlement. Now, I lost that discussion. But fortunately, Councilor Pena has taken a leadership role here. Thank you to the mayor, the whole city council for these funds. MDC is, I mean, they're dying of drug overdoses. So it'll be well-used, and it's a success. And well done, she's not here tonight, but county manager. I know she's fiercely advocating for MDC and their services. So I'm enthusiastically in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. I support this too, obviously, the second today. I just want to make sure, we, you know, we got asks earlier this year for, and I was able to talk to Shirley Reagan and learn that this is an ask that we have a need of $1.5 million, but that this is to support an ongoing need. It also is one-time dollars. So how we make sure we're properly funding as the need increases, as we know so many in the, the UNM has already also identified that if they can catch it earlier, they're already improving the system, then more people can be on. So I think there's so many improvements that are happening and in the make right now. Make sure we're budgeting for that growth as well. So, thank you. Mad, any other comments?
No, thank you.
Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the vote.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kessada?
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Chair Baca?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 10D, also Manager Acosta here to present. And Madam Clerk, please provide a resolution number.
Sure. For item 10D, we have FR 2023-126.
All right. For the record again, my name is Pam Acosta, Behavioral Health Initiative Senior Manager. It's my pleasure to bring before you a motion to formally receive a federal grant award from the Department of Health and Human Services, Health Resources and Services Administration in the amount of $422,031. This grant award was a result of a congressional-directed spending request submitted by Burnaleo County in April of 2022, which was supported and secured by Congresswoman Stansbury for the purchase and construction of a third school-based mobile health clinic. The motions before you are as follows. Accept Grant Award Number CE1HS52399-01-00 to the Office of Behavioral Health Initiatives from the Department of Health and Human Services. Number two, approve the financial resolution budgeting the grant amount of $422,31. And three, authorizing the county manager to execute associated agreements to the purchase and construction of an additional school-based mobile health clinic and subsequent amendments as required. This agenda item is sponsored by Commissioner Kessada, and with your permission, Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to yield the floor to him at this time, and stand for questions afterward, if that's okay.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Yeah, you know, I'm Mr. School-based Health Center. It's been my thing, because we always talk about, you know, what our problems are. And just, you know, through this meeting, we talked about housing, and we talked about, you know, providing treatment and all these other stuffs. But my game plan, and always has been my game plan, is prevention intervention. We know that happens at a young age in this community. It's, you know, the data speaks for itself. You know, I think the day I can stop breathing is when there's a school-based health center, at least in every elementary school throughout Burnaleo County, because it's no longer a poverty thing, right? It's a every-school thing, when we're talking about, you know, drug addiction, behavioral health, dealing with families, all the stuff that, you know, young people deal with. And we grew up without those services. And we really think, we believe that those services are what we need to do. I want to thank staff for, you know, applying for this grant. And I want to really publicly thank Congresswoman Stansbury for hearing our voices. But I think she's a believer as well, obviously, because, you know, she went out of her way to really make sure that this was, you know, directed towards the school-based health center. And that she's talked to us about, our idea right now is mobile, because it's really hard to navigate putting permanent facilities on APS properties. And so this was our solution. This was the way around the whole, well, you can't put that on our campus. But this, they've agreed to. So with that being said, I hope that my colleagues will support this. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I move for approval.
Second, no discussion, any others? Of course, I do have a little discussion. I'm sorry to prolong this meeting. I just want to make sure, this is, I mean, I think this is brilliant. I think the fact that it's mobile is even more brilliant. I'm so thankful that Commissioner Kessada has brought this and has been waiting seven years to get to see them actually in action, which is part of what, I totally support a third one. I am prevention intervention all the way. We, if we're not doing, I really believe that we, many of the people are dead today, could have, if these mobile units had been in action, could have been possibly their lifesaver, right? I truly believe that. And so I support this 100%. I do, I did read the fiscal analysis and saw that, you know, it passed in 2020. And what passed was the $800,000 needed to build two mobile models, and then an additional $800,000 for operations. Which, and then, so I'm assuming that those would have been, those $800,000 would have been budgeted and available for 2021, 2022, and again, 2023. Eight times three is 24, that's $2.4 million at this point that we would have been spending and providing these much-needed prevention services into our communities. So I am a little interested in where those may be. Hopefully, I'm sure they went to more behavioral health somewhere else. But I also just think, if we're going to have another mobile unit, great, that we're supplementing this, and we'll continue, and that we're staffing it, I guess, is there plans for those reoccurring? Now, we have the $800,000, hopefully they're able to staff. Also, just, so I'm asking about staffing, if there's any accountability to where those $2.4 million, which would have been expended had we had them operational at this point, were at. And then lastly, just because of the stuff we've heard with the fleets for fire, are we going to run it to barriers with, maybe that's the barrier? I don't know what the barrier for us providing this service already is. But, you know, who's going to drive this? Because it feels like there becomes also some kind of barrier. And I just want us to get or have it publicly known, since we've been waiting for quite some time for these to be operational.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, for your questions. I appreciate those, and those are questions that we've asked ourselves. Part of the issue, the challenge, has been manufacturing delays. Once the pandemic hit, you know, this is an international problem that squares away. I did ask, our two units should be ready in July of 2024. We were told initially they were going to be ready in October, and that got pushed back. They're still building and waiting on parts for the CASIS. And if it's not one piece, it's another piece that they're waiting for. The response that I got back from one of our manufacturers is that most manufacturers are still not out of the woods, as it relates to supply chain issues. In this industry, we continue to see shortages in multiple areas. These are all items detrimental to build and complete our CASIS. He says that this is happening to all truck manufacturers in our industry, and with related industries as well. Lead times have yet to improve, that they were looking at 18 to 24 months to get a CASIS, and we've been pushing them to deliver, because we have been waiting for so long. It's impacting, we've put an RFP up for operations, and we find one. But if they're told it won't be ready until July 24, we run the risk of losing those individuals. So we continue to press for these mobile units to be ready. I have seen the designs, they're close, we just need that CASIS. We've made them ADA accessible so that people won't feel trapped in them, the tight space, that the provider or operator of the vehicle has the ability to make direct eye contact with the individual. Because the way it was originally set up, they would have their back to them. So we're looking at all these minor things and making sure that this is going to be a place that's fruitful, you know, for the individuals that access it, whether it be elementary, middle school, or high school, or even community members or parents. We are working closely with Albuquerque Public Schools to look at the four quadrants. So the goal is to place these mobile units in the four quadrants of Burnaleo County, and also charter schools, and then some are- and also charter schools and then some remotes at community centers to provide that care. And then, and then, so you did mention the cost and we did go back in front of the commission for an additional $44,000 because costs went up. So the money that we're receiving right now from this grant will fall a little bit short. However, we're planning on leveraging behavioral health, JRT, in the future within our budget to account for that and then to incorporate those operational costs as well. So I hope that that answers most of your questions.
Yes, and that, so, I mean, that $800,000 we have is recurring, so hopefully that's enough to cover. We don't have to go too much into be tight funds.
Madam Vice Chair, I'm sorry, I failed to answer one additional question that you had and that was what happens to the funds that were not spent during all of those times? So any unexpended funds would fall into the fund balance. And as you've seen, we've reallocated the fund balance to fund projects like Family Wellness, the Gateway Center, you know, the Medical Sobering Center, the New Mexico Veterans Integration. So those funds aren't just sitting there, they're being repurposed. We're always looking at other ways. If we're not going to spend down, can we add more or additional funding to another project where we can, so?
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. We are really here, right? Maybe it's the Department of Health and Human Services. Oh, yep, that was yours. Okay, we are at item 11 approvals and we have none, 12 discussion. Code of Conduct County Manager or Replacement. We have actually Compliance Officer Rocky Gutierrez coming to the Code of Conduct Review Board and Compliance Office update fiscal year 23.
Let me see, so how's the video going? Let me see. Pardon me, just one second, please. I'm sorry. Let's see if I can close this out. I'm sorry, I don't know how to close this.
Thank you, Jamie.
There we go.
Yeah, you got it on your hand. All right.
There you go.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Rocky.
Madam Chair Baca, Vice Chair Barboia, members of the commission. I'd like to also acknowledge Mr. Andrico Cuddy, Attorney, Mr. Martinez. It's a pleasure to present tonight on behalf of the Code of Conduct Review Board and the Compliance Office our semi-annual report. So I am Rocky Gutierrez, Chief Compliance Officer for Burnley County. I'd also like to acknowledge our staff, Ms. Veronica Gonzalez, who is our Code of Conduct Review Board Attorney and our Acting Program Coordinator, Ms. Martinez, Rita Martinez. I'd also like to give a special acknowledgement to Ms. Rachel Florians for her long service and commitment to this office. She has recently moved to another position and I wanted to publicly thank her for her assistance, especially when I came into this position. It would have been difficult for a transition without her assistance. So I greatly appreciate it. Without further ado, I know it's been a long night, so I'll quickly get through this presentation. Some of it is, it duplicates, we present based on the annual report, quarterly report and some specifics that are generally public information, but I'll make it quick, okay? So as you know, the Code of Conduct is located in Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 4, within the ordinance as the citations that you see before you. The review board has many responsibilities. One primary responsibility is to receive and act on all sworn complaints. All sworn complaints are signed complaints and are public record and shall be made available in accordance with provisions of the Inspection of Public Records Act. As noted in bullet point two, the review board is currently in the process of accepting and reviewing amendments to the Code of Conduct ordinance. The board has already received some proposed changes and are in the process of review. That is not closed, so if you have any amendments you'd like to submit, there's still time. We have quarterly status reports. Those must be approved by the review board and made available to the public on the county's website. And semi-annual reports, semi-annual reports must be presented to the county commission, excuse me, a report of the review board's activities. So I will note that the compliance office is increasing its reporting status before this board on a semi-annual basis. Reports have been submitted to this, to the commission on a biannual basis, but we will be submitting semi-annual from now on. And the compliance office, our responsibility is to accept and process complaints. Complaints are alleged county government misconduct, violation of code of conduct. We ensure complaints are routed to the proper administrative center for handling and for investigation. So we get non-code of conduct, no, excuse me, non-code of conduct-related complaints. And if they are not related to the ordinance specifically, we will present them to the proper department for investigation. Our obligation also is to track those complaints. We want to ensure that there is a resolution within 90 days for each complaint that comes to our office. So summary of-
Mr. Gutierrez?
Yes.
If I may, I just, while we're on that, I had a question about that. So you mentioned other complaints that might come in that are not related to the ordinance and not necessarily related to compliance. Do you track those as well and track their resolution? Or you're just referring to your complaints?
No, sir. We also log and track them and we created a spreadsheet that matches HR's complaint log. With that, we will follow up monthly with those specific departments to ensure a resolution has been made within those 90 days.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. So summary of Compliance Office review and the Board of Duties, again, sworn complaints, issue advisory opinion, so that is if there is a request, meaning an interpretation of the code of conduct, we will submit that to the Code of Conduct Review Board. If the review board submits an opinion, a person can use that as a defense if a complaint is filed against them for any matter or act that they commit. As I mentioned, we also receive non-code of conduct complaints and we also conduct housing appeal hearings. Those are for proposed terminations of assistance. My office stands as the hearing officer in those particular cases and will give you a quick summary of how many cases we've had this year within the fiscal year and last year. We also conduct code of conduct trainings and we will talk about that here shortly. I want to give a special thank you to our Code of Conduct Review Board members. District 1, Mr. Eric Zavio Jeffries and alternate Paul Chavis. From District 2, Mr. Chuck McCune and alternate Angel Garcia from District 3. Madam Chair Martha Brown and Jenny Lusk from District 4, Mr. Robert Dusetti and Sean Consenzi, excuse me, Con, Casanzi, Consani, I'm sorry. And District 5, Mr. Ralph Ronz, Vice Chair and alternate Mr. K Tecomsa. So the board's obligations, I focus for this presentation on FY23, but we also provided some FY24 information up to date. So the board has had six meetings from FY23, sworn complaints, there were three sworn complaints and sworn complaints not filed, there were two. That means there were complaints submitted to the office, but there was either information missing or there was no notary. We had reached out to these complainants and they decided not to follow through with those complaints. District Court Appeals, there were two informal guidance. FY23, there were three. And I'm happy to announce that in FY24, a lot more people are reaching out to our office for, you know, questions about conflict of interest. So there was 11 since FY, since July 1st of this fiscal year. Compliance Office, again, is myself and Ms. Rita Martinez. FY information shown here is quarterly. From January to June of 2023, there were 18 housing hearings. Prior to March of 2023, Mr. John Grubasek filled in as the hearing officer. So I want to give him a thank you as well. From April to June 30th, the compliance office performed a total of 57 Code of Conduct training sessions. I came in in March and we had until June 30th to get all county employees trained. We were able to do that with 57 sessions and over 2,000 employees, so I'm very proud of that. For FY23, there were three sworn complaint hearings and one advisory opinion. Those three sworn complaint hearings also received final action. For FY24, shown by quarter, from July to present, there have been 17 housing hearings. And from July 1st, the compliance office performed five new employee orientation Code of Conduct trainings. So as new employees come in, we try to capture them with a Code of Conduct hearing prior to the end of the cycle. For FY23, there's been one sworn complaint filed and the hearing date is currently pending and no advisory opinions. And that is the end of the report. Thank you. I'll stand for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Rocky Gutierrez. Any comments, discussion? Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
I will, since you've been the most patient, waiting till the very end, and actually, all of you have. So thank you all for being here. But thank you for all the work you do. It's essential. It's, it's essential to government operations. So the fact that you're doing it, it's kind of an unsung office that you hold and so, thank you. And well done. This is very informative.
Thank you very much. Thank you. May I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
You know, on a personal note, I believe the county is one of the greatest public bodies that I've experienced in my 30 years of experience through public employment. The county employees, you know, along with the body of commissioners from the county manager on down, has been one of the most exemplary examples of ethics that I've seen in my 30 years. I want to say that. And I mean that. I've been in public employment for 30 years and I really appreciate the county, its work and the efforts that you all give and attention you give to the county. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If the announcement of the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, December 12, administrative meeting, 5:00 PM, Kansas City Commission Chambers. If there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Don't give me the gavel. That's how we stay late.